Let's all rise and start the meeting with the pledge to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the free public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible,天地一 Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our off-cycle meeting today. It's actually February 19th. We put off the 10 days because of the cycle of three snowy Mondays. Our regular village board meeting to our workshop night. Tonight is really a regular village board meeting with Panda and the press here and so forth. That being said, we're being assisted tonight by our deputy clerk, Lyra Hart. Cindy is on vacation this week. And with that in mind, Clerk's Minutes approval. Brent, have you had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I have.
Everybody else had a chance to look at them? Last month, January, we had a meeting on January 12th and 22nd. And I approved them myself, and they seemed appropriate. Any additions, alterations, or corrections? Here you are. There's your motion to accept them?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Lyra, do you feel like reading some financial report numbers, or would you rather just quietly sit there tonight?
No, what do you want me to turn?
Usually Cindy reads off something, and it'll give me a chance to put something on the screens, too. I can give you this. These are the account balances. You just cite the name of the dollar and monthly expenses.
Sure.
Thank you.
Account balances. General fund, $221,575.27. Water fund, $102,055.3. Trust and agency, $17,158.42. Materials management, $5,928.98. Petty cash, $25.58. Village Green, $3,736.88. Hard Scrabble, $1,594.05. Health insurance, $3,057.20. Capital projects, zero. Monthly expenses, general fund, $176,203.19. Water fund, $50,253.79. Trust and agency, $17,158.42. Materials management, $3,512.81.
Thank you. And attached is the actual line-by-line update for our budget, with those numbers. Is there a motion to accept the Treasury report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. While we're on it, a couple of things. We, in our village municipal budget cycle, have to present to the Board a tentative budget by March 20th. That's under Village Law. Which is pretty much a month from tonight. And our habit and our routine has been to meet as a board and work together in cohort, as colleagues, to establish even a tentative budget. I think it's always been a successful way, A, to get us all on the same page, and B, to work our way through it instead of unloading a tentative budget on everybody at a later point in time. And what we do historically is, we tend to meet once a week through the crunch season between now and then. I was inclined to think that we should do that on Wednesday nights. I think it might help with getting Mr. Trapp here. It might be a little further away from the weekend than things where we could do it. I'd pull you folks. I see Steve shaking his head. I'm thinking seven. We tend to meet up in the conference room. They are formal open meetings, but it's, we hash things around. What we have the benefit of using is that modeling worksheet. And we can plug in numbers and actively play. Well, I use the word modeling. It's really true. We can see what a particular number aligns and so forth. It's a really strong Excel program we've developed that helps us quite a bit. So, it seems like Steve could do Wednesday nights. I'm thinking just starting next Wednesday. Yeah, work for the other side of the bench here. Mr. Trapp and Mr. Wachek. Alright, so we'll ask the clerk to make a note, and we can put a form notice out just so the meetings are properly noticed and so forth.
Is it seven o'clock?
Pardon me?
At seven o'clock?
I think so. Does that work, seven thirty?
Seven's fine.
Alright, so we'll do that and see if Lyra can make a note. Hope Cindy gets a notice maybe tomorrow. And then, last month, I put this slide up on the screen for everybody to see. The Board's familiar with it, but we didn't have full coverage from the local press a month ago, our last monthly meeting. But what it's showing, and it's overall good news, but I just wanted to get out there to the public. This is the years down here at the bottom, 2007, 2011, and then up at the top now, we're at the end of fiscal year 2014. These are the fund balance figures from what's called our AUD. It's an annual update document that we give to the Controller's Office. And you can see since 2007, this is the zero line. This heavy dark black line is zero. The village is having trouble staying within budget, meaning it was having negative returns. Deficit operational years that developed more negative until about 2011, when this administration came in. And this is the course since then. We've taken it up to, this is $108,000 right here, as a fund balance. But our goal, and this is a goal that comes from the New York State Controller's Office, is this $270,000 number. We're not there yet, but this is a planned approach to correct this situation, bring us into the positive, slowly by staying within tax caps, maintaining services, and doing it in a controlled, planned fashion. We think we're on track. And the other thing we got, we'll probably be seeing from the New York State Controller's Office, shortly they'll be releasing their reports of fiscal stress. And we have not come off their susceptible to fiscal stress list because they would like us to have this number as a fund balance, which means it's kind of like the checking account balance you would have. And right now, we're at this 108 type bet number. So we have some more work to do. Quite frankly, I don't think all of us are convinced we ever really need that kind of a number. It's true reserve. That's almost taxing and not providing services just to build a fund balance. But we do have to, and we are coming out of real rainy days years where we joke a little bit, I've lost more hair and got gray hair since I've sat up here. But it was, a lot of this had to be done, and it's what we're up to. So we probably will see, the Controller could be releasing something shortly. But I just wanted the public to be aware, and the Board is aware, that this is our planned approach, and that's what we're working on. That being said, as far as budget and finance world, the past few weeks, we get contacted by the bond rating agency, S&amp;P Standard and Poor's. And we deal with them every year. And today, they released something. They upgraded our bond rating. My opinion, it's not great. We used to be triple B minus. Now we're playing triple B, which is like getting in high school or college a little better grade. And quite frankly, the village doesn't go now to the public bond market. We've been using USDA and other sources. We finally can get better rates and better plans from the opportunities we've taken. But that is a good step, that Standard and Poor's is realizing this trend. But you might see something, they released something publicly. It's really kind of interesting. They give us a draft report, and then we get a chance to read it and comment. And then, I think it was like at noon today, they release it to the financial market. But again, we don't float that many bonds. We're not like New York State, where I think we're floating billions in the bond market. But that's the news on that front. What I thought we'd do is, we had Lyra read the Treasury report, those are related financial statements. We'll do the Wednesday sessions. What I could do is, I guess move to the police report. For the month of January, of course, 2015, we had 269 incidents and 91 uniform traffic tickets, 15 arrests. It breaks down within the village of Red Hook. In those incidents, it was 185 in the village, 80 in the town, and four in Tibbely. As far as traffic tickets, 61 in the village, which includes four parking tickets, and 30 in the town. As far as the arrests, it broke down 11 in the village and four in the town. And the detailed report is attached. We could then move, the next committee on our list, there is trustee, Mr. Trapp, planning zoning reports, veteran affairs, and emergency services.
Alright. Well, the emergencies, I think at this point are at bay until we have our next foot of snow.
Ah, yeah.
Be careful. We've got wind chills and all those sort of things, though.
I know.
Just stay inside. You should have stayed inside.
It's hibernation season, I think.
And the planning and zoning world, in January of 2015, we had one building permit issued. Always happens this time of year. It's a little too chilly. Nobody wants to do much of anything. Two certificates of occupancy issued, three certificates of compliance. And SAM conducted five municipal searches. There was a little bit of activity at the planning board. I know there's, in February, which will come out at the next meeting, but be that as it may. In the January 8, 2015 meeting, a sign was approved. Some lot line alterations, couple of sign applications. And they closed the public hearing for the CVS. But just for those of you who are listening and have interest, the CVS at the February meeting was approved. So it's coming. It's on its way. They'll be working out, no doubt, the building plans with the building department for approval come springtime. Some folks know this, some don't, but the old IGA is going completely away. That building will not be used, and it will be completely leveled. And they're starting from scratch with the brand-new building. And our planning board has worked very diligently in an effort to get the best building, the best look for the village. And everybody, as in planning, everybody got a little something of what they wanted. There's some give and take in there, and so everybody got something. Nobody got everything they wanted. But I think it's going to be a nice building. It's going to be nice to have a larger CVS online. I think, I think it's going to be appreciated. I know that there's no particular schedule that they've announced at this point, but they'll be working come springtime, no doubt. And for the, for the month of January 2015, $732.50 was taken into the building department. And say it slows up a little bit from springtime. I think we'll get a flurry of activity. And of course, the CVS permit will come online, which will be probably a significant amount there. And attended the retirement gathering for Nola Hooper, longtime senior planner at Dutchess County Planning and Development. We were all very sad to see Nola go. She, Brent and I both, when we were doing our planning and zoning, we relied very heavily on Nola's expertise. And she was always very kind and provided very quick turnarounds for us on her views. When things got pinched a little bit, she, she was a very good person. And she had quite a few people down there. It was good. Had 30 or 40 people down there at planning and development. It was nice. And for the time being, Jennifer Kukosa is going to be the liaison between planning and development and the Board of Directors, which I'm president of the Dutchess County Planning Federation at this point. So looking forward to working with Jennifer. And we've started planning our courses. We've got a few of them set up. The standard courses that we have every year, the standard site plan course for all the new folks that come on to the, to the planning and zoning boards. And we've got quite a few new ones coming up. We'll revisit Seeker, no doubt, again, the new Seeker forum, so that people continue to catch up on that. And let's see here. Oh, put some metal in the scrap metal thing for you. And I think that's it for me, Ed.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
I know, as he was reading through, he mentioned how building permits are down for the season, but we've kept, Mr. Harkins pretty busy. Lyra here also works as secretary to the planning and zoning department. We're running through our mandatory fire inspection list. It's commercial buildings and certain size occupancies that need this either once a year or once every three years. So I know what you've been putting through. His pace is there. You will see attached board. You'll see inspection report sheets he's using. I think that's coming off of municipality now, right? Is that true, Lyra?
Yes.
Two good things. It keeps the buildings and the tenants safe, and it's a good thing for everything.
This is a big time of year for that, because I think you have a higher incidence of fires. Everybody's cranking up their heater.
Yeah.
Fireplaces and things like that, so this is a tough time.
So that's good. Thank you, Jay. May I move over to trustee Jen Norris for her sequence of reports?
Alright. We actually have big news with the library. They were named one of two finalists in Library Journal's Best Small Libraries in America. They've received a $10,000 award from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. This annual award was created in 2005 to encourage and showcase the exemplary work of libraries serving populations under 25,000. And the library will be having a party this Saturday. The date is the 21st. And the party's going to be at the Old Lyceum in town, which I'm kind of intrigued as to what it looks like. They do ask at URSVP, you can give them a call or just stop in the library and let them know that you're coming. So congratulations to the Ruffup Library for that. Materials management, for the month of January, we sold $3,430 in garbage tags and paid out $1,079.34. We had 5.85 tons of single-stream recycling and 9.98 tons of garbage. We had our third annual electronic waste recycling event, another huge success. We collected 23,000 pounds of electric waste. That was up 5,000 pounds from the year before. We have sincere thanks to Lori Houston, Brenda Cagle, Sarah Emboden, Mike Zelli, Dennis Collette, Jody Jacobs, Teresa Burke, Ed Blundell, Site Manager TJ and his staff, as well as Dan Baxter for his artwork. We also thank Bard College for their use of volunteers. This is in conjunction with their Day of Civic Engagement, Day of Service. So thank you for that. We can't do it without volunteers, for sure. And events. We actually had a hard scrabble meeting last night, and with all this snow, it's interesting to be like, "Oh yeah, at some point, we'll be able to have a concert in a park again, and there'll be grass, and we can have a spring roll and hide Easter eggs." So stuff is happening. Our spring roll will be April 4th at the middle school lawn. We believe from 11 to 2, we're still working on that, so details are to follow. Apple Blossom Day will be Sunday, May 9th. I think we're going to do another bike rodeo.
It's usually not a Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Saturday, May 9th. We're going to do another bike rodeo.
I would like to.
We're going to do it.
Okay.
May 16th.
Oh, great.
That will be the day before the Tour de Red Hook. I think we're going to try to do that as an annual event. If you weren't here, last year, didn't know about it. Last year, my Girl Scout troop, in conjunction with the Police Department, got together and
And Kingston Cyclery.
And Kingston Cyclery, and my brother, who's a big bike enthusiast. They did some bike tune-ups and bike obstacle courses and stuff to get your bikes ready for the Tour de Red Hook, which the town puts on, and that's a bike tour throughout. So it's a nice little biking weekend. Hard Scrabble Day, Saturday, September 19th. We're working on that. Starting to get jazzed a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, we can flush that out a little bit. This will be the 10th year the current volunteer committees have done the legwork for this thing. So we're trying to do it like a huge fashion. Not that it's never been huge before, but we're looking at some new ideas, some new things. And it looks like we got some grants, celebration-type money through the New York State Assembly. So that'll help us with a bunch of different celebrations, not just Hard Scrabble Day, which is kind of nice. As you were talking, Jen, I thought of two things. One was, we are enticing the farm market back. We think it's important for the village, the village residents, and the farmers. I sat with Richie Bezinski the other day on that, and we have some ideas, and we're going to try to make it as vibrant as we can. But again, it's them. It's a private sector event. We try to help. It's up to them to spend the money and things. The other thing, there's a poster in our halls, which people might want to know about our Board, too. It's, remember when Sergeant Hillerbrand had the ability to save a young child's life with the breathing issues and things about two months ago? The Red Hook Renegades have put together, independent of us, on June 22nd, a little celebration where I guess he's going to throw the first pitch. And it's hot dogs and soda kind of thing before the game. I was toying with the idea. It might be kind of fun, instead of all of us driving down in our own car to the far end of southern Dutchess County, we could try to get some sort of charter bus or something. It'd be kind of a fun day. We could celebrate whatever that is, summer solstice and
June 22nd, you said?
Yeah, it's posted in the back, but we start talking that up somehow. I'm sure Lyra will help us on that. The judge, I don't know, all I can think of is The Simpsons or something, but he apparently has a CDL where you can drive school buses. But he volunteered. I thought, I think we'll go for that, though. I don't think a school would go for it, to be honest with you. I'd just see it, you know, all of us. It's yellow school bus.
With Jonah driving?
I'd like to make it a little classier. So if you're listening on TV world or newspaper world, we'll try to put something together for that. But we do try to make things fun for our village residents as far as celebrations, and that's what it's all about. Are you done with your?
I'm done.
Okay. Mr. Steve Darktuck, do you want to go with facilities and water there?
Uh, the water report, month Month of January, the water treatment plant process, 6,529,000 gallons of water for a daily average of 210,000 gallons. In January of 2014, we saw 8,400,000 gallons processed for a daily average of 274,000 gallons. In early January, the Well 15 project was substantially completed. A raw water sample was taken to the Smith Labs in Hyde Park and was negative for bacteria. At that time, the well was placed into service, producing 98.5 gallons per minute. 50 gallons of 12.5% liquid hydrochloric solution was used in January for daily average consumption of 1.61 gallons.
Steve and I met one weekend day. They were kicking around some ideas. And one thought, as we were talking about budget season, Steve, I have a feeling that our electric costs are being controlled better with those new VFDs and well, the pumping systems we have. I don't know if you have a chance, not immediately, but if you could compare, see what, see if it's just anecdotal to me, or is it really happening? We get multiple central Hudson bills, so it's not just like one bill we look at. We probably get 15 bills from different locations of buildings and sites and streetlights. So it's not a matter of picking one bill. So Steve's done some spreadsheet on that project for us before. Alright, and then, let's see. Guess we're ready. Excuse me, getting over a bit cold. We're getting ready for Mr. Deputy Mary Kowachek there. Are you set to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Village Green Committee's monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts, ours follows committee's certification. Shade tree contractual is $3,331.3. And the Village Green Committee checking account is $3,736.86. There are no Village Green meetings held during the month of January. The Village Green Committee is currently seeking volunteers to serve on the city. We've already had two people come forward, which is great news, and hopefully we'll schedule a meeting soon. We're going to have some changeover, I think, in the personnel, and want to get that set up before the end of the year, darkest of year anyway. And there are currently two bench locations remaining without dedication plaques. One's at the Trustville Bank and the other one at the Emporium on South Broadway. Village residents can purchase a plaque for $125. Proceeds from the sale of plaques will be used to pay for the purchase and installation of the plaques. Remaining funds will be deposited in Village Green's checking account and used for future village enhancement projects. And if people are interested in purchasing a plaque, going quick, I guess, can contact Village Plugs Office at 758-1081 for more information. Village Red Hook Highway Department monthly report. The village's snow ordinance is currently in effect through March 31st. And this means that no parking is permitted on Village Streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And on New York State highways, which are Route 199 on Market Street and Route 9, which is Broadway, from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. When snow and ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Reddick Village Police Department or any responding police agencies. Costs associated with the vehicle tow and end stores will be charged to the vehicle's owners. And vehicles in violation of the snow ordinance will be towed and stored by H&amp;M Towing Enterprises located on South Broadway. A $110 towing fee plus a 25 days, per day storage fee. These are for vehicles not claimed within the first three days after being towed. It will also be charged to the vehicle's owners. If your car happens to be towed, the owners can contact the Reddick Village Police Department or the Village Clerk's Office for more information. And also, the owner and/or occupant of every building or lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk is required to remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm. The Village Board of Trustees may direct the Village Highway Department to remove snow or ice left unclear at a cost of $2 per linear foot. So this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. Residents and businesses with a fire hydrant located on their property are also advised of clear snow to provide access to these hydrants for emergency situations. This isn't required by law, but it's good policy to keep it clear and safe. The village received a memo from the Poughkeepsie Dutchess County Transportation Council on January 13th. The council is prepared for the 2015 traffic count program. The only one that was listed in the village was County Route 79 or Linden Avenue from West Market Street to the Reddick Town Line. The Poughkeepsie Dutchess County Transportation Council requests the input regarding potential conflicts due to roadworks that would affect volume. And I don't think they'll start another bridge reconstruction at that point, so maybe they will. The Village Board of Trustees approved an undertaking, which is perm 1 to 12, for the benefit of the New York State DOT on January 12. The Board of Trustees agreed to comply with all applicable responsibilities for the temporary control of all modes of motorized and non-motorized traffic, complete restoration of state facilities to their condition prior to the permitted use or activity, and all claims, damages, losses, and expenses for access and operation upon state right-of-ways. These are for repairs that we would do on state right-of-ways. And we do have obligations to maintain aspects of the DOT right-of-way from the curb back to wherever the end of their right-of-way is. And the undertaking shall run term of 20 years, unless terminated for the purpose of future activities. We've been, I think, reapproving this on an annual basis, and this is a good way to keep it going. No scrap metal was sold during the month of January. Of course, Jay's going to help. Next up, I hope. Total revenue generated for the fiscal year 2014-15 amount is $1,386.59. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $17,563.81 has been generated. Proceeds from this program are going toward purchasing tools and equipment for the Village Highway, Water, and Material Management Departments. Businesses and residents interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Highway Department at 758-8600 or the Village Clerk's Office. And the Highway Department personnel will assist property owners and residents by picking up the scrap metal upon request. The Interventical Cast Force and Reddick Infrastructure monthly report. I'll start with the Reddick Sewer Project. A conference call is conducted on January 16th at the Village Building with representatives from New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. C.T. Mail and Ed Knight also participated. And we talked about the environmental conservation law regarding transfer of ownership with debt obligations. And this is a scenario between Reddick Village and Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Village and Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, that are trying to determine who will own and operate and build the system. Hardship application filing date is of April first, two thousand fifteen. Um, right now, the village has qualified on the intended use plan, the Clean Water State Volley Fund, we are, we scored forty-one, which is two points above the funding line, um, cutoff or threshold, which is at thirty-eight, so currently, we qualify for hardship financing. Uh, the population, certain criteria, the population has to be under three hundred thousand, and the household median income has to be fifty-five thousand six hundred and three dollars or less. Uh, according to the two thousand ten census data, phase of two thousand ten, our median household income was fifty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Um, but there has been some, every quarter, the American survey comes out with an amended household median income, and this is averaged in on a five-year period, so as of the last estimate that was taken, our current median household income is fifty thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, so it's been dropping per quarter, the one before that was actually at fifty-one thousand three twenty-four, so we've been consistently going down, which now we do definitely qualify for better financing and it may even go down to where we qualified for low mod for a community development block grant, so constantly keeping around that and see what, what works best for us. Um, the following additional documents have been forwarded to USDA from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater, this was done on January twenty-eighth, um, bond resolution, general bond resolutions, um, answers to questions from USDA regarding the terms of service agreements, possible modifications of agreements to match USDA terms, uh, what they're trying to do is um, see who qualifies for the best funding opportunities, the village only, or if we were to partner with the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, so we're still looking at different options and different ownerships for this thing, but we are moving forward. Um, the Red Hook Water Projects, the Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two, which is the storage and distribution system improvements, meeting was held on January twenty-third, we reviewed the status and progress of the project, um, representatives from C.T. Mail, Ed and myself attended, we lived at the status of the New York State EFC Engineering Planning Grant, this is a thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollar grant, which we received to study the water. Um, thirty thousand of that was actual grant, seventy-five hundred dollars was a matched now base from the village, either in cash or in-kind services. Um, we looked at letters of engagement from the attorneys and location of fire hydrants resulting from the new water mains, so we're determining where the hydrants will be, and I think we're close to making that determination, that the existing hydrants will stay. The new mains, and the project will happen in southwest quadrant of the village, um, they're gonna keep the old mains where they are and add new mains on the opposite side of the road and then tie into the new water mains from there, other water hydrants, fire hydrants from that point. Um, so we meet every Friday just to discuss the water infrastructure projects. Um, the two thousand thirteen Community Development Block Grant, um, Steve alluded to in his report, the final payment requests and supporting documentation has been submitted for review and reimbursement from the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. Uh, the final part of that, a seventy-two hour test is required to be performed on the entire well field, uh, determined, to determine the maximum supply capacity and yield for the village. This information is requested from the Dutchess County Department of Health and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and this is for the water supply permitting. The information will also be necessary, necessary to determine if the village has enough access, excess capacity to supply new development outside the village in the town of Red Hook. Uh, we are currently looking at and drafting up, maybe for next month's meeting, a cross connection policy. I draft local law to amend chapter one ninety-five to establish a cross connection control program. Uh, the purpose of this policy is to, to determine and establish a legal foundation for a municipal cross connection and backflow prevention program in order to protect the village's water supply from the possibility of contamination or pollution by isolating these contaminants which would backflow or back siphon into the public water supply. It's also to establish technical specifications of cross connection control and backflow prevention and to promote the elimination of existing cross connections, either actual or potential between this customer's water system and other water systems. And it's also to establish a penalty specification for violations and to provide the maintenance of the program which will effectively prevent contamination of the village's water supply. So a lot happening with the water, we have three different projects working on right now. Uh, the two thousand fifteen Community Development Block Grant, the village of Red Hook was notified on January fifteenth that its application from South Broadway, the Red Hook Firehouse Access and ADA Midstream Connection was selected for funding in the two thousand fifteen Community Develop- Development Block Grant application. The village submitted an application on October fourteenth for fifty-two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars in funding for the reconstruction of a sidewalk section of the southern bounty of the village, the west side of Route nine in front of Coburn's Laundromat, and the installation of a new sidewalk in front and along the east side of the Red Hook Firehouse. This new sidewalk by the firehouse will provide handicap access from the existing parking lot to the main entrance and also emergency east side exits of the firehouse. I don't think my colleague Jay Trappi, who's been on the labor, probably bring up and um.
We've been very fortunate.
We have been very fortunate. And on the task force side, uh, the task force met on January ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and twenty-seventh, we meet at the Red Hook Town Hall every Friday at eight AM. Uh, we reviewed the Village of Red Hook's infrastructure projects, both water and sewer, we discussed outreach and assistance for the proposed Red Hook Community Center, um, there's a presentation by the Economic Development Committee Chair, Chris Close, and we also got responses from the New York State Ag and Markets regarding limiting agricultural and residential properties in the town of Red Hook's residential districts. Been busy with the infrastructure. Um, some other committees, the Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are laypeople, we're not actually members. Uh, the EDC met on January fourteenth and twenty-eighth and, and we meet at the Red Hook Village Building, and the Red Hook Events Calendar, which is currently online, um, it's often, the EDC has begun distributing event calendar flyers to local civic groups, churches, businesses, urging their participation to list organizations, events on the state of the art friendly townwide website that would incorporate, organize, and present all Red Hook civic business, churches, local government websites. Um, we also talked about the organizational database, uh, the EDC is organizing a confidential list of area businesses, churches, and civic organizations for periodic communication, marketing, and business support. Uh, the Community Preservation Fund and Farm Land Protection Advisory Committee, I'm a member of that, representing the Village of Red Hook, there were no meetings held during the month of January. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund, which is the two percent transfer tax on all sales of real estate in excess of the county meeting, the difference between the county meeting and the actual sales price, sale price of the, if it's above the county meeting, two percent of that is put into a fund, um, to preserve agricultural lands, cultural resources, aquifer protection, so forth. Um, the current balance is three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, which I'm a member of, representing the Village of Red Hook, never knows the ERC meetings held during the month of January. The Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook and Village of Tivoli Shared Services Committee Monthly Report, both Ed and I sit on that, representing the village. Uh, the Highway Shared Services Steering Committee was held on January twenty-first at the Red Hook Town Hall. Um, the draft impact analysis of study options and alternatives for the Town of Red Hook Highway Shared Services Study was discussed and reviewed. The Highway Shared Services Steering Committee was held and actually televised on Panda at the, the West Depeister Hall in the Village of Tivoli, um, this was on January twenty-second. The impact analysis of study options and alternatives was presented to the public by Tim Wieterman of Rondell Consulting, and the presentation included the following, the review of the goals associated with the study, history of the cooperation with the three Red Hook municipalities, including Shared Highway Garage, Shared Equipment, Shared Fuel, and Salt Sand Depot, uh, review of the deliverables to date, including the analysis of existing conditions, department structures and services, feasibility, study of options and alternatives, impact analysis of study options and alternatives, and then the presentation of options and alternatives went on, and six different options were presented. Option one and two, um, standardization and shared administration, option three was to develop shared training and knowledge transfer programs, option four to develop shared long-range capital planning and purchasing programs, option five was to realign service delivery areas, option six was the consolidated highway DPW services within the Town of Red Hook, including the villages of Red Hook and Tivoli, um, and I think what was presented that, that was options one through four was agreed upon by the steering committee, it would be the most doable based on public employee and committee, committee input, and there'll be further discussions on these options and how we pursue them, um, coming up next week, actually. Um, information regarding the deliverables and the options and alternatives presented can be accessed by redhook dot rondell consulting dot com, so everything that we've been talking about is what I've added and put on this website. Uh, Red Hook Together, both Ed and I are members of that, and there was a meeting held on January fifteenth at the Red Hook Library, um, there were presentations by historic Red Hook, Red Hook Community Arts Network, Red Hook Area Chamber of Commerce, Bard College for Civic Engagements, different events, and these will be found on, online when these minutes are posted. Eric of Freudenberger, who's the director of the Red Hook Library, Shala Karrick, who's the Red Hook Library Head of Circulation, and myself, attended the American Libraries Association Midwinter Meeting in Chicago on January twenty-ninth through February second, we were actually scheduled to come back January first, but got caught in the blizzard. Um, members of the Red Hook Libraries Transforming Communities Cohort attended advanced community engagement training and discussed progress, challenges, and ways to improve the methodology with the other nine national cohorts. Members of the Red Hook cohort also assisted facilitators and instructors from the Harwin Institute on training exercises for other national library systems. The Red Hook cohort was prominently featured due to the diversity of the team, the public knowledge information gathering processes that we've employed, and the collaborative efforts being made to engage local organizations and individuals of the Village of Red Hook community. Uh, the Library Transforming Communities, there's a ten library district cohort, Train to Listen, Connect, teaches the work of the Red Hook cohort, this was a magazine that was published nationwide, it's a trade magazine, basically to the libraries, but they had a real nice article about Red Hook and what they're doing. Um, and that's it.
Thank you. Just to work off a few of the points, break them through, one, on the screen there I put on, there's a website, what2doinredhook.com, it's merchants in the village center gathering together to develop this thing, it's pretty nice. I just wanted to show, I don't know if people really get the calendar Brett mentioned, um, as he was going along there, um, I believe it's linked, it's definitely on the village's website, this calendar, the town's website, and here is community calendar on this What to Do in Red Hook website, and as you can see, this is a private sector venture, um, River Chronicle somehow is a part of this, but uh, but the calendar's pretty cool, if we pick tonight here and click on it, it'll say, it's a little fuzzy to me here, I didn't adjust our focus too well, but it's, it can be a profit-making entity or not-for-profit, you know, you see here, Tasty Tunes at Taste Buggies tonight, so a lot of people are there listening to live music, and if you click on it, it gives you more detail, and then um, you know, the library, something, hooks and needles, the mirrors are out somewhere, and again, give you the details, so it's really open to all church, uh, not-for-profit, for-profit entities, there's a method, you could reach out to the village clerk, whatever there's, you need a password, and there's certain people that can get you into the calendar system, but it's a good thing, it's a step forward, I think, to uh, get the word out there, and we do, um, we did build a pretty nice site. We still feel like we compete a little bit with uh, Red Hook Brooklyn, 'cause a lot of searches, just by sheer numbers, there's so many people in Red Hook, and uh, Google goes there first, but, so you do have to type in what2doinredhook.com. Another thing too Brett mentioned was, on the more business side of the world, um, the Highway Shared Services Project, uh, we did have that open meeting in Tivoli, as he described it, and uh, it was mainly attended, I think, the town board members came, Village of Red Hook Board members, Village of Tivoli were there, people separate from the committee that's actually monitoring and running the program, but um, some rep, local residents there too had good questions, and I think this board, we have to look at all the details and move forward in some fashion, I have my own personal thoughts, we won't really get into it tonight, I think we'll let, next week there's another meeting with the consultants group and um, I think possibly our March meeting will set aside a little more significant time to really just start kicking around, because it also does tie in with budgeting and so forth and the efficiency plans we have to make, so we have to pick up a plan of action ourselves. You know, we've asked each of our department heads to turn in their budget wishes, dreams, and concerns for next year, and you know, it's, there is a lot of money we spend in highway, and is there a way to somehow control that a little more? As you can see, our path has been, been to control expenses, if you remember the graph, we're, the graph, we're doing budget, better on a budget level than ever, but um, it's not done yet, so we have to keep the work up. Anyway, um, I guess we could move, I think we got through all committee reports, right? Don't forget anybody? I had one housekeeping thing here, uh, we'll call it resolution, village elections are March eighteenth, if I had it right, it's a, it's a Wednesday, not a Tuesday, and um, we do hold that here in the village, and it's operated by the village clerk, the way the system works, but we do have to have formal, what are called election inspectors, like you're used to seeing in a November election, so Cindy's not here, but she did say that, she left me a note, she would ask us, I'll make a formal resolution, but we want to appoint two election inspectors and um, I hear the tape going, I'll stop talking for a minute here. Ready? Uh, we want to appoint two inspectors for this upcoming election, I thought we'd make it in the form of a resolution and give it a number from the clerk's office, but uh, the recommendation is that we appoint Lori Urban and Arlene Harkins as election inspectors for two thousand fifteen village elections, so uh, I would make that in the form of a resolution, that whereas the village elections are upcoming in March, on Wednesday, March eighteenth, we would, we need two inspection inspectors to assist the village clerk in operating the election, I move that we appoint Lori Urban and uh, Arlene Harkins as inspectors, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Are those inspectors required to attend formal training?
No, it's not the same as the Board of Elections run, the village elections are actually run and operated under the auspices of Municipal Villages Law and the clerk, so they, and we're using the old, um, lever machines, we do get, the way we get assistance on the technical side of that is, um, people, if there's a physical breakdown of a machine, we have assistance on that, these are people that just check you in and make sure you're seated, registered, you know, it's in the village of Red Hook, so.
But there's no requirement for formal training?
No. Any other discussion? One favor?
Hi.
All right. You go, or no?
No.
Okay, so you have four, um, motion, resolution passes, thank you. And then, let's see, what else do we have? Maybe, um, I'll give you an update, I don't remember two regular business, remember we discussed, um, a town-based water customer that has exceedingly high water bill that we're looking at, and we, um, communicated to him that he should report the matter to the insurance company, I'll give you a quick update here, he, he did that, and he was turned back by his insurance agent, who I said, well, no, we need to hear formally from the Claims Department of the Insurance Company, so I sent him a letter to that effect, and we haven't seen a formal stance, the board's position was, before we looked at the bill any further on, we want to see if there's some source of money to help disperse him with it, so that's where that one is. Then let me find something on my screens here. Then let me find something on my screens here, let's see. As you all know, we operate our Tower Street Water Tower as the current elevated gravity pressure feed for our water system. It also has the secondary benefit to us of being high on a hill and higher above the hill. So it's in market demand for cell tower tenants. You've got the three big guys up there, ATT, Sprint, and Verizon. And Sprint just came to us a few months ago through a subcontractor. They want to change out some of their equipment to make it some 4G capability for them up there. And we have our in-house consultant, David Growth, look at the technical specs. And we had our village attorney look at the legal aspect of it. What we have are essentially ten-year leases with these folks that move through time. And Sprint is in the middle of an existing lease. The lease does enable them to change out equipment. The question I had is, are they taking more space? Can we charge more rent was the one question. And the answer is, they're not taking more space, they're just swapping out equipment. And in effect, our consultant confirmed that with us. And then I had our lawyers drop something to modify the lease. But what they did provide us, just so everybody knows, what we do is, we don't pretend to be the experts on loading and wind factors on the tower. And that's, we use an expert who handles like a lot of the region of New England and Northeast New York. He's, that's his trade, and we pay him for his services. He's essentially on call for us. So they provide all of these specs, I'll just flip through them on the screens for you guys. And, you know, they're not adding any ground-based, there's no new buildings or anything like those cooling sheds, I'll call them, I don't know what the terminology is, but they keep their equipment cool on the ground. There's no new, it's an existing tenant, nothing new on the ground. And what we've got is, I just shrank on me, but let's see. Bear with me a minute here. The consultants looked it over, he's been in touch with the Sprint folks. What involves is bringing a large crane up Tower Street again. We did this last year with a different tenant. And then they have to apply for building permits, the whole, this approval doesn't waive anything internal to our building and permit process. But it's essentially modification made to facilities. So what I'd like to do is get the board to think about this tonight and move forward to accept the lease amendment. And then we can direct the tenant to start filing for their building permits, things they need to do, and get it changed out. As folks know, between the three tenants, we make about eighty thousand dollars a year in renting out cell tower space, which is a good thing. And what the subcontractor and our consultant tell me is, this will give the village, if you're a Sprint customer, the 4G capability, and which is, everything's trending for more bandwidth and more speed. So that being said, what I drew up was a cell mod resolution. We would have the clerk fill in, I remember when she's back on duty Monday, but it's the long lines. Whereas the Village of Red Hook has an existing lease. With Sprint, to enable them to have a presence on our tower, I'm doing some fast editing here as I go. Whereas Sprint has requested to update some of their antenna on the tower. Whereas existing lease controls such activity, and the tenant has submitted a detailed plan and engineering info to the village, and this has been reviewed by our cell tower consultant, David Growth. Whereas the village's consultant has examined the plans for the change of equipment and indicated is an upgrade that will be done properly and is within the parameters of the capability of the tower and the lease. It is an upgrade to enable 4G communication in Red Hook area. Whereas legal counsel and the consultant reviewed the lease and developed Amendment One, attached and approved it. Therefore, be it resolved, the Village of Red Hook will accept Amendment One and authorize a tenant to begin the process to make the equipment changes. The tenant must work within the, with the guidance of our consultant and within the planning zoning requirements of the Village of Red Hook. I would ask that, I make that as motion, a second, we got some discussion. Is there a second? Discussion-wise, Steve's our cell tower, is what you do for a living, right?
No, I actually do cell towers.
But communications were out, yeah, so.
Has there been any movement on, there was some concern about the noise issue. Has that been resolved, or does that have to do with this specific tenant?
It's not this tenant, it's a secondary issue. What Brent's talking about is those ground-based cooling buildings have air conditioners with compressors that have been sources of noise complaints. Our consultant has addressed it, and we've had, part of the recent meeting I had with him was, that's a different issue than this, but I tasked him with monitoring that and giving us some recommendations. And we mentioned VFDs before. Apparently now in the cooling world, there's a similar concept where you, instead of having a compressor come on at full load, you can come on gradually. So we're going to explore if that is still very noisy, if that tenant can be coerced to change out the equipment. Instead of, we've been trying to mask it or put up baffles and things, but that is a good point. And we've been working on that one too. But anyway, just to restate it, the technical guy looked at it, the lawyers have looked at it. The lease enables it, and we couldn't scare any more rent out of them for this one, but. Yeah, I'll clean the titles up. It was, I worked on it, let's see, Jay's my editor, let's see.
Fourth paragraph and sixth paragraph.
Can we also get a hard copy, Barb?
Talked to David Growth, originally he was saying to come in here today, tonight. He's our consultant, but he was in a blizzard somewhere by Syracuse. Must have been a lake effect thing going on, and so I'll go down. So I cranked up the resolution at that point. So I can clean it up if you guys, yeah, I won't change anything meaningful, this is spelling or. So we had a motion discussion. Any other questions or thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So did the election inspection. One thing that came up, I just want to give everybody, it's not on the agenda per se, but as Brent and Jay were talking about the block grant that we rewarded the fifty-two thousand and change for sidewalks. I might want to sit with Jay separately. We did get some communication just yesterday. The town of Red Hook also applied for a sidewalk grant on South Broadway, on the east side of Broadway, under a TAP grant program, which is federal money through DOT and so forth. We knew they were applying for that, and they included in their funding request what we'll call the very south part of the village sidewalk on the west side. We knew that, and we intentionally thought to ourselves and took the steps that block grants are a little more definitive of this to being successfully achieved than a TAP grant, which is a huge competition. The town was in with a lot more entities statewide. Turns out, the town did get their TAP grant, and we got our block grant. And I got some communication just yesterday from Planning, which monitors the block grant program. They seem to be concerned, and I've told them that we, their concern is that it's double-funded. And we're saying, no, we would, what we've told the town is, we'll handle it under the block grant and pull it out of their program. Because you might all recall, the town has twenty percent, the grant is like nine hundred thousand, but they have a twenty percent matching share. I was like, which is a hundred eighty thousand.
Same lucky bucks.
Funny? Yeah, and that was our plan and our goal, is if we want it. I have a feeling I might be getting a little pushback from the people at the county level that first approached. So I think our plan makes sense. We can do it the way we want to do it, and we can get it done quickly. Whereas we're not, I'm not convinced that we want to give it up and have the town deal with it through there longer. This is a much bigger project, so it'll be a lot longer even before they're working the ground, in my opinion.
So the town would reimburse against what they actually use then, right?
It's a reimbursement program.
Yeah, so I think it saves the TAP, you're saying, right? So.
The other question I would have too, and I don't know if you would ask about this, but in terms of specifications, we received an SDP man for the West Market Street, which is a federally funded locally administered. But we had to subscribe to the letter, to the DOT specs of this. What we're doing front of COVID, which is a reconstruction minimal. You know, there's a, basically a meeting there was fulfilled with concrete and cutting and a couple curb cuts. But so as far as, you know, what set of specifications we're going to comply with, did it's going to be more restrictive based on DOT or whatever?
And that, what I did, I sent a quick email, blast back today to the person in planning, outlining what I just said. But we might need to gather our forces and go another level up or something. It's, I think our plan makes sense, is timely, and I don't want to give up what we've got there. Yeah, they're looking like they wanted us to give back our component of, we had the two sidewalk components that Brent mentioned, one at Firehouse itself and one at South Broadway. So anyway, it sounds like we have consensus on that as far as keep it as our project and.
Whether we get the town, if we get significant pushback from the county on that, and their insistence is that the town handle that piece by Colburn, could we, and I know that we've got certain restrictions in terms of the low mod and what we can and can't do, could we expand what we do?
Go somewhere else, yeah.
If they push real hard.
Yeah.
We tried at the walk-through to, you know, get more sidewalk on Firehouse late. And, you know, there was a, because we were above the low mod range, you know, the money could only be used for handicap purposes or for reconstruction. So new construction, that's, but, you know, we're going to have a gap between that sidewalk there. We currently have our firehouse to the new one, in front of the firehouse, so we get to look at this.
Yeah, I think it's going to be difficult, but.
What was that, what's your opinion?
I just think it's going to be difficult to try. I mean, with the low mod restrictions that we have now, since our income levels have been revised for the 2010 census, we may have some issues there. But, I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't be bad to pitch a couple of times if they kick us out of the Colburn side.
So I'll be working on that a little bit tomorrow, keep you posted.
There's something to consider, I think on the application, we didn't specifically break down those two costs per sidewalk, there was a lump sum.
There was a lump sum.
So I, you know, just how they would do that, how we would do that.
Yeah, because I looked at that today, exactly right. We didn't price one plus another, we wanted to go.
That's just linear footage of.
Yeah. Well, I thought we do is, we do want to go to executive session on real estate and public safety matters. But before we do that, out of fairness to the audience, I thought we'd have some public comment. And is there any public comment from the audience?
On the V and T tickets and everything else, will you collect roughly a month on that? The month before, you had forty-seven, now you got sixty-seven this month or last month?
Yeah, we could, I could, yeah, hold on a second, maybe tell you. The judge gives us a report. The way it works is, the state of New York gets a piece of it through, through the nature of municipal, V and T law, rather. I'm a larri fan, what I was looking for.
Brent.
Oh, Brent, okay. Or Human Filing System, Brent. Let's see, this is the judge's. It's a, he gives us a month of reports in the form of memo I'm looking at, from Tree Wuster to the village treasurer. I'll read some numbers and then we'll describe it. So attaches my court check number, such and such, in the amount of forty-six hundred ninety-two dollars. Represents the gross income of the court for the month of January 2015, and involving eighty-seven matters. So they adjudicated eighty-seven matters that month for that gross amount. But that doesn't all come to the village, it's about a seventy, thirty, the state takes about thirty percent of that. It depends on the ticket and the fine and so forth, but it's not a direct result to us. What happens then is the controller through DMV gets copies of all this, and they build a village. So we have, if you look at our budget, you'll see budget lines for gross court revenues, net court revenues. You can actually see it on our budget.
So what would you say on an average for a year?
Yeah, I could actually tell you in a minute. This is two-way, what I've got on the wall here now is, this is that, that model. Let me find the right lines for you. What we've got, these projections, if you take, let's, what he said was forty-six hundred that month, it tends to be, if you average between three and five thousand, that's, tends to be the monthly recovery. So if you pick the high point, what we project is at the six-month actual point, I don't know if you can see the wall or down, but this would have been between June and November. It brought in thirty-three thousand gross. And at that point, based on H3 tickets, we paid to the Office of State Controller fourteen thousand seven. So it's.
Now it goes in the general fund, right?
Yeah, and so that's the six-month point. So if you trended that for a year, it'd be sixty-six thousand in, but twenty-eight, thirty thousand out. So it's, that's, that's the answer on that one. What else we have? I guess before we move to executive as well, just general business from the board that we didn't touch on.
Well, I guess just real quick, I had gotten the annual Dutchess County Planning and Development Division of Solid Waste. They just want our numbers. I filled in what I can. Brent, if you know the scrap metal number, and I don't know if we should put in the electronic waste number? Do you know where that went to?
Yeah.
Okay. And then that can just be sent out tomorrow.
Just for the beginning of our fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes, just the past, the calendar year.
Oh, from January to January?
Yeah.
So I had to look back at the last fiscal years or is that the scrap metal?
Well, our fiscal year's June to June, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're asking for the past year, for 2014.
From?
January to December.
You could, you could, you could pull up from his minutes, if you have.
Yeah, what do you need the value?
I need, no, I need the tons. Which I know, I don't know that you do.
I know, but Cindy has it as well.
Okay.
She gets back, but. So you're from January fourteenth to January fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In tons.
Yes, thank you.
What was that called, Tim, Dutchess County?
The Dutchess County Planning and Development Division of Solid Waste Management. I'll leave this on the desk in there, and then when it's done, whoever can just fax it to them. The fax number's here. I'm on a Girl Scout trip tomorrow, so I can't do anything with it, but.
When's it due?
It's due tomorrow, but I.
It's kind of slow.
Yeah, it's, I had just seen it, but yeah, just whenever. It's not like we're going to, you know, get a lower grade on it.
She wants to.
Yeah, I'm done with it, so passing it on. Although we do need the number, like the number where the electronic waste went, that can be filled in.
Can't think of a name offhand where it went to.
The, why not Wednesdays? Is that what you're talking about?
No, where the, the electronic waste went to.
Oh, okay, so you're a little What2DoInRedHook.
No, it's.
Didn't that go to an outfit up in Rochester?
Yeah, and I have an email, they actually send us a really nice. Yeah, and I have an email, they actually send us a really nice attestation document that lists specifically compliance with, it's called cold salmon or certification, or some, some formal thing where they attest that it was the metals and the plastics and the data are all quashed and recycled properly.
Within the United States?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, it's eight-ten, I would like to entertain a motion to go to executive session on real estate contract negotiation and public safety, which should be entitled to executive session two. And we'll move off, and we have no, depending on the outcome of the real estate, I think we might come out wet on that. We'll be gone for a little bit, we retreat to the back room. Well, the board's back from executive session, I show eight forty-five P.M., so.
How you doing?
Entertain a motion that we leave executive session, enter general session again?
So, one more.
One favor? Aye. All right, a couple things, one is what we're talking about, as everybody knows, the village of Red Hook is hot negotiations to buy the parking lot from Key Bank over here. We sent a letter of intent out, and we received back a property sale agreement with some conditions that we responded to, trying, we were adjusting and modifying some of the conditions, and we've got a document now we can live with of the board and of the village. And it contains the offer amount and the conditions, and I asked, we've had it reviewed by council, and it's lined up to be secured and funded through some grants, and a contingency in the agreement is that those grants have to come through, we're not going around a limb with promising the money, but not having a ninety-nine point nine-nine percent certainty. And we, we do have that, but it's a lot of paperwork to get the grant processed. So, long story short, I asked the board to authorize me to sign the property sales agreement with Key Bank to purchase what we call the village parking lot on Prince Street. It'll start a timetable and a sequence of events, we're doing surveying, environmental studies, a few different things that are built into the agreement too, so, but it gets it going and sets us up to start requesting reimbursement and things for the, for the purchase price component. So that being said, just a quick motion to enable a mayor to sign the property sale agreement we've negotiated and described to everybody, reviewed by council. Is there a second?
Second.
And any other discussion out here? The reason we went to executive was, we were talking about sales price and different things that were, have been deemed confidential, and, but we're purchasing it for sixty thousand dollars is the price, and we've had appraisals done and so forth, and we feel it's well worth it for the village to own this thing. It's been a project, I think, hanging around the village for, I guess, ten years. It's, so we got some good news from the state assembly, and they've helped us fund it with this grant process, and it's still not done, we have a lot of paper chase and a lot of work to do, but I'll work on that. And is there a vote on that then? One favor? Aye. Thank you. So that's really good news for the village, and I think hard work by this board and all of us, appreciate the help, and we'll keep on. And then one thing is, I was thinking of the general business part, as you mentioned before, Steve's Archuck does a lot of communications work, and I'd like to find a way for this board to be able to, if we can find some grant money or some funding, to get us tablets so we could do more digital work. We're just trying to move and put certain screens up and get away from some paper, but I don't know if we can find some funding entity that would help us with that. And then B, we're talking about internally, we've done some cloud computing backups, but Steve, you want to talk a little about Gmail, Gmail and email concepts for the village?
Uh, yes. Currently, all the village employees and the village itself is on the Gmail, we switched over to Gmail a few months ago, and it's working very well. I'm working on, as I had showed you here the other day when we met, I'm working on a overlay of the village to, for a location of, right now it's the fire hydrants, but I'm also looking at other, but that's, that requires, in order for me to share that, that requires people to have Gmail accounts. And I noticed that we don't all have Gmail accounts.
We being the board?
We being the board, and I'd like to see the board get a Gmail account. And really, actually, get the Gmail account within the village itself. And I could talk to the IT person tomorrow and see exactly what would need to be done to do that.
Sounds good to me. One thing we have to be careful of, which we don't do, is we can't, we can communicate to each other in Gmail, in email format, but we can't make decisions or have off-site discussions.
Correct.
If he was conveying, hey, here's the fire hydrant map, let's discuss it next meeting, things like that, you know, we'll move off.
And I think I, we were advised at one point that if I send something, I can't send it to everybody at one time, I would send it to Brent or send it to Ed. If there's individual conversations going back and forth, that's one thing, as opposed to everybody being involved at the same time.
Right, and it's like the public meeting stuff, but I think it's worth looking into, because I think it could open, like right now, most of our communications come to the clerk at info@redhookinmyvillage.org, and then she disperses it out to whoever is the appropriate trustee. But if there was a way to make it a little more condensed, that'd be kind of interesting.
Also, another suggestion is, the recent meetings, you've been running the, your laptop, and you're showing it over there.
Yeah.
I'd like to move that screen over there, possibly. Instead of having the red background, have a white background. It would show up a lot better for the camera and for the people in the audience.
Yeah, sounds, I'm just looking at the dimensions.
I don't know if the dimensions would fit.
Yeah, it's a good point, I, we default it there because the camera tends to be there, and it gives him the angle, but this would never work, but yeah, I could see if our facilities work, I could measure that and see.
Put a monitor underneath the air conditioning.
Yeah.
I could change positions as well.
I think originally we thought more crowd walked on that side, and, but it's, but yeah, it's a good, that's why we pay them the big bucks.
Yeah.
Anyway, all right. That being said, I think we need the motion to pay bills after, well, we did, since the meeting was ten days delayed, I think most of you all got to look at the vouchers ten days, two weeks ago, so if they're not at this meeting, but, so we still need to motion no, I moved that we pay bills after audit, is there a second?
Someone.
All favor? Aye. And then we'll let, Brent, I think we're all done, you want to do your thing?
I could make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Are you going outside, you mean?
Okay.
I'd like a second now.
All favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you.